Good evening. This is the November 29, 2023 meeting of the Newcastle zoning board of appeals. Mr. Secretary, can you call the first case?
First case is El Gazali.
Yep. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, can you say your name for the record and tell us what it is that you seek?
Sure, Paul El Gazali. And I'm looking to put a six by ten shed in the backyard. I believe the zoning is thirty feet from the rear of the property. I'm looking for a variance to put it ten feet from the rear of the property.
Okay. And why did you choose that particular location for your shed?
So it backs up into the woods in that part, in that corner of the property. So it's not near anybody's home. And it's sort of, the property is not large. So thirty feet from the rear, we'd put the shed sort of in the middle of the lawn rather than, you know, tucked away in the corner.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak to this application?
No hands are raised.
There are none. Members of the board, any comments or questions?
What do you plan to put in the shed?
Just some lawn furniture, bicycles. Yeah, lawn tools, that sort of thing. Yep.
It wouldn't be better if it was closer to the house?
Um, no, I don't have that much property at all. It's probably less than, I think it's point two nine acres. So the backyard is very slim. And the side yard is the, is the, where the, I don't know if you see that, where the deck is. Yeah. It would be, if it's thirty feet in, I don't even think it would make it in the backyard. It'd have to be on that side yard to get that thirty feet. And it'd be in the middle of the lawn. The only lawn, yeah, where the, any space to, you know, do anything. And then the side, you know, it would back up into the woods. And then there is a nice sort of corridor there between myself and the neighbor directly below me.
So behind you, you say there's woods?
Yes, yeah, there's a, there's a-
How many houses back there?
Um, there are in the distance. You can't really see them, like when the, during the summer months. But there is, yes. And then it's, it'll, it wouldn't be backed up into the immediate neighbor behind me. But it'd be tucked away in the corner where there's woods, yeah.
Now, I'll move, we close the public hearing.
A second motion.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Genzey. Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Can I get a motion from one of your members? I can make a motion. I move that we grant a rear yard variance of twenty-five feet at Twenty-One Avenue A, Mount Cassico, New York. Paul, I'm sorry, I can't-
That's okay, El Gazali, it's fine.
El Gazali.
Yeah, he's just calling Paul.
For the following reasons. He has a shed located on his property, which is about point two nine of an acre. And there really is no other location they can put it. If he put it closer to the home, it would be in the middle of his lawn. The property is narrow. And there seems to be no other suitable location for it. The granting of the variance will not, will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The benefits sought by applicants cannot be achieved by any other feasible method. The requested area variance, rear yard variance is not substantial, although it is substantial. But there is no feasible location for the shed. It will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood. There are no neighbors who are present, I believe, who have written in opposition or have spoken in opposition. Self-created hardship. I guess I'd say it is in some ways self-created hardship. It's, it isn't necessary to have the shed, I suppose, but I'd say it's not a self-created hardship.
We should see how much stuff we have.
Okay. So I move that we grant a variance. Do we need anything on this?
Six months to start.
Six months, is the shed, have you put the shed in already?
No, no.
Okay, so you have six months to start, one year to finish it. Do we need a-
Survey, please.
We'll run a survey of the property.
As-built survey.
As-built survey. Are you building this or just moving a pre-built shed on?
Just moving a pre-built shed.
Second motion.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Genzey.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi. You have your variance, good luck.
Thank you. And how much was the footage of that? Was it, what I, what I asked for?
Twenty-five foot rear yard variance.
Okay, so I was asking for ten feet, so I didn't get the ten feet?
No, you're ten feet off, so it gives you, that means it's a twenty-five foot variance.
Oh, I'm sorry, how does that work?
You need thirty-five feet.
Is it, okay, the zoning is thirty-five feet.
So you're ten feet off, so it's a twenty-five foot variance.
It's a twenty-five, I got you, okay, thank you.
You don't have to make it twenty-five feet back.
Back, but it's ten feet, okay, that's how it works, thank you, okay. All right, and then I have to present a survey to the town?
It has to.
And after it's built, okay.
I have to have a survey so we know exactly where it is. Present it to the billing department and they'll follow it there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next case.
Weiss.
I always tell people, EVAs are like math class, right?
Could be.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brett Schwartz from Zara and Steinmetz. I'm happy to help against him. And Weiss. My colleague, Jonathan Colwell, who's been assisting us here. And Alan Phillips, the project engineer, is on Zoom. I think this is a pretty straightforward ask. And what our clients are trying to achieve is a twelve percent development coverage in order to keep most of the circular driveway that currently exists on their property. They are proposing to remove three hundred and thirty-eight square feet of that driveway to minimize the extent of the variance. I'm here for a twelve percent development coverage variance. A couple of years ago, our clients applied for a pool permit to install a pool and a patio. At the time that permit was approved, they agreed to remove the entirety of that circular driveway in order to achieve compliance with the coverage requirements. Now, having time gone past, having reconsidered from a functionality standpoint, a safety standpoint, the property really would be better off to maintain as much of that circular driveway as possible for maneuverability for vehicles, as well as access to the front door of the home without the circular driveway. As Alan will show you, there's really not a connection to the front door. So our clients, all of your parents, are going to have these basements for access into the home. Do you want to show the three different plans? What we, what we have for you is what was before the pool permit was granted. And then what was approved with the permit and now what is being proposed with the variance condition. So if I could come to the screen. Okay, so this was prior to pool construction. Here's a circular driveway. I don't know if you want to scroll to the next one. And this, all right. So this entire circular driveway was going to be removed in connection with the pool project. The pool gets installed, the patio gets installed. And then it comes time to, okay, we need to now take out this driveway. And that's when upon further reconsideration, so the reason I mentioned, we're here to ask permission to keep a lot of it, as you see in the third slide, Alan. So we're going to remove three hundred and thirty-eight square feet, restore that to lawn area, to a grass area, while retaining what's immediately required to achieve, again, that use, that safe maneuverability for turning around. And so I know we submitted our letter with the five factors. Alan will design appropriate stormwater. We'll be doing environmental impact as far as community character goes. These are all accurate improvements. We're not taking coverage for anything vertical. There have been no neighbor complaints since the pool and patio have been installed. And there have been no, I believe, no neighbor emails or letters submitted in connection with this application. Alan, is there anything that you wanted to add?
No, I think that's fine. I will say that the chambers that were installed, there were thirteen chambers that were installed in the rear yard for the pool. Although, you know, there were, you know, I'll just say with, with the originally proposed removal of the circular area here, it was done even though there was a small decrease in impervious surfaces. But even with this being retained, the chambers that would be, that are there, that were installed and were inspected by the town are more than adequate to handle the entire increase in runoff even from the one-hundred-year storm. It's like seventy, almost eighty percent more than what would be required to handle the one-hundred-year storm. So the chambers, I'm just saying, from a stormwater perspective, it really has no impact at all. Actually, there's a beneficial impact because every single runoff event, what was there previously is being completely handled by the chambers that were installed.
Alan, just point out the walkway, please, while you have the mouse.
For this, the walkway in front of the door, correct. And, you know, what's, what's being, and at least it allows someone who's visiting the property to enter the front door, to park in this area here and be able to access the front door of the house. Without it, basically, you're blocking the driveway or, you know, I suppose you could, like, so as you could park on the street, but it's quite a long distance.
Alan, would you turn anything to add?
I'll just say, the original plan of the, with the removal, never even contemplated, never seemed to contemplate the extension of the driveway, the extension of the walkway to the driveway, which I found really odd. It's just very awkward without it. I think with this driveway in place, it really makes sense from circulation and pedestrian access to the house.
I lost my voice at about four-thirty today, so I don't have anything to add. I mean, they've explained it, I think, perfectly. The only thing, I think you might be asking yourselves is, why are we asking for this now? And not at the beginning when the pool permit was submitted? And we didn't understand, you know, we thought we had different options. Impervious, or I forget the word, porous asphalt or different things we could do. But when we later found out that it had to be a hundred percent grass, and we didn't realize that. And then it's when we reached out to Brad to find out, you know, what are some other options we could do? And the variance is another option. So that's, that's why we're here now. Many questions for me, for it. Maybe better my wife speaks than I.
Okay, so for the record, the original application, the applicant agreed to remove that part of the driveway.
In order to achieve compliance.
In order to achieve, to get the permit to build the pool. And now we're changing online.
How long ago was that?
Was it about a year and a half ago?
So it was a year, a year ago.
Yeah, I mean, the pool completed last year, so.
So you got the approval about a year, two year and a half ago on this, okay.
Now, is there any other places on the property where there are impervious surfaces that could be removed to compensate for the impervious surface that that circular part of the driveway is creating?
So we anticipated that question, Mr. Chairman. And do you want to address that? I mean, the answer is, we really scrutinized the site to see if there was anywhere else we could shave off. We removed as much as we could from the driveway itself. Out of any other thoughts? I know we talked about this earlier today.
No, we looked at, I mean, Alan, and they wheelbase and all these calculations that I can't fully, you know, comprehend or do myself, just as far as what would make that feasible to use for the deliveries, the Amazon trucks that come around. So they're not, you know, coming up and ruining the car. So they took as much, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
No, so, I mean, so they took as much as, as they could from that area because we would take absolutely as much as we could to just maintain that function, to be able to come to the house. It's, as you can imagine, and hopefully you see just from the illustration, I mean, it is, it's the main entrance. That's where everybody comes and goes, except if you're going down to the, to use the garage. And that's, you know, the basement level. So, um, so they took as much as they could.
It's not excessive patio or other improvements in the backyard that we can start.
That was my next question. Is the patio large enough that you could remove some of that to get us? We don't, we're not looking for a hundred percent compliance, but we're looking for as much compliance as we can possibly get. If there's any other places that we can do that?
There really isn't much. I mean, if we needed to shave off, maybe, I don't know, fifty or something, a minimal amount, I'm sure we could find something. I just don't, I don't know how significant it would be percentage-wise.
Have you ever considered reconfiguring the driveway to bring it closer to the front entrance without the circles and allowing somebody to stop and drop off there and then go up to the garage and do the turnaround business? I mean, I'm not telling you how to do anything. I'm just throwing out some ideas that may help us to mitigate the coverage problem here.
I didn't, I don't know if I followed your suggestion. If you can repeat, yeah.
If the driveway were reconfigured without the circle and brought closer to the front door, swept around so that, so the person could stop there and drop off and then continue to the back where the drive, where the garage part is and to make their turnaround. No, you're saying that the trucks can't turn around, but if they can go up to the garage, there's room up there. I mean, that would, that would help everybody. Not only would it help, it would solve the whole problem.
I think they need a variance.
You wouldn't even need a, you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't be here. You would just go ahead and do.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I would, I would-
So you couldn't, you wouldn't turn around? It wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to make the turn there, you'd have to go down.
Well, I'm not gonna, you know, we're not gonna design anything for you because we're not engineers to do the design. But it looks to me, my personal opinion, is that that driveway could be moved closer to the front door for, to allow for, I know what you're saying, that you don't want your elderly relatives to have to walk that far.
That's it.
But that could be mitigated in a certain way. And maybe you should talk to your engineer about that before we make a decision and see if there are any other ways that that could be done to bring you into compliance and you won't, you won't need us at all. And if not, we'll have to make other, you know, we'll talk about other things. If you're willing to do that, I'm willing to put it off, give you time to do that. If you're not willing to do that, then we're gonna have to talk about other things here.
I mean, we, we, we're willing to consider it. So we're hoping to get done.
Well, no, you know, everybody wants everything. And I don't fault you for that. Because everybody, I want everything too. I don't get everything, you know. But we're trying to, we're trying to give you as much leeway as we possibly can. But our job here is to, is to minimize any variance request as much as possible.
And we've tried to do that by removing a portion of the driveway itself. And, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, if this was a twenty, twenty-five percent variance, right? I get it. And then maybe we really need to look at some other alternatives more closely. I would submit a twelve percent. It's, it's not so substantial request. These are accurate improvements, not causing any, again, new issues or stormwater issues. So there's no harm to the environment or to the community. But on balance, under the factors, I would submit that it weighs in favor of the applicant, considering the benefits sought to achieve. If the number was higher, there was a greater extent of a variance, I could see it, I guess, a little bit more. But given the, what I would call a fairly reasonable variance request, I would ask them more to consider this proposal with the removal of the three hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
I see what you're saying. And you're talking about percentages. And percentages are not necessarily indicative of the, the impact that these variants have had. Because percentages on certain size lots mean certain, different things on certain size lots.
You're totally right. A one percent variance could have a huge impact.
Well, no, I'm just saying that percentages is a, is a factor, but it's not the determinant factor. And so-
You're right.
That's my feeling. I'm hoping my colleagues are gonna put their input in and we're all gonna come to some kind of conclusion here. So who'd like to?
I, I, I think there are alternatives. Twelve percent may not be substantial to you, but I think it's fairly substantial. And it's certainly self-created. So I would like to see an alternative.
I mean, we'd like to see, as Mr. Giardina said, we don't necessarily have to get a hundred percent. But I think in our position, you know, we have to enforce what, what we can actually get done that would be reasonable. And that's what we're trying, we're trying to get to a reasonable position.
Mr. Gottlieb?
I would agree with the prior, the statements of the other members. I mean, I would like to see, because I do believe as well that there are other feasible alternatives. And I, I would prefer to be able to make a decision, having seen what those are, just based upon this, having read your papers. And I am sensitive to the concerns that you're raising. There's no question about it. But it just seems to me that there may be other ways to get there. And it's, it's not for the purpose of putting you through bases. It's because, you know, I do believe this actually is putting percentages aside substantial. So I'd like to see more, I'd like to see some alternatives.
So you mean from you on, or you, okay?
No, I think there are alternatives to the circular, you can still have a turnaround there. Square it up. But I'm not a designer. But you can pick up space right there.
You think one of the, one of the issues, that circle in the middle doesn't count as coverage? So when you're looking at-
You still pick up space.
Okay, I mean, hey.
Okay, so based on what I've just heard, I'm going to put this off till our next meeting. I'm going to ask you to go back to your designer, to your engineer, research any possible alternatives. Hopefully get something that you don't need us at all. But if you can't get to that point, get us to a point where we can compromise and we'll see how we do. So here's no objection from the record board. I'll move that we postpone this until our next meeting. I'll give you a chance to get your, get your engineer and design to work up something for all concern.
Okay, understood.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
See you next one. Next one, Mr. Secretary.
I apologize for the pronunciation. Shinoji?
Shinaji.
Shinaji, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Arn. I'm the architect for Shinaji Matthew. And this is a request for a front and side variance for a garage. That would go on the side of the house. This is the survey. And then on G101, there's Ron in front of you. That would go on to the side of the house. It's attached, an attached garage, but no connection between the house and the garage. And the reason for the front setback is that there is a chimney that is located within, inside where the, the garage would be. And twenty feet back from that chimney is about a reasonable minimum for a garage. And so that's where the front setback request would be asking for. And then also from that garage, all of these steps, one go to the left, this way. A101. And, um, and the owner wanted to have around a sixteen, sixteen-foot wide garage, a one-car garage. And to be able to achieve, having the garage have the depth, minimums twenty. Normally I like to have twenty-two for the width of garage. And to have the car parked inside and also have a path to be able to get up the stairs to the second floor, which is storage. At some point in the future, he might want to blast through and have an entry into the house. But to be able to get the car in, go up these steps and then maybe he should go across or go up to the top. That sixteen feet allows for, allows for that type of space. And so the variance request, so the side setback is twenty feet is what it should be. And proposed side setback is eighteen feet, and the requested variance is for two feet. But when you have the combined side setback, which is fifty feet, the proposed side setback is forty-three feet and requested variance is seven feet. So when you have them combined together, it's asking for more setback variance. But it actually is two feet from a, from a, from a side, from a side setback, just from the side itself. And then the requested side setback from the front is three feet. And it's, it's fifty feet. And fifty feet right now is just at the front of the building. You can see just on the survey that fifty, fifty point three is right where. So it's right at the existing front of the building. And so to, or to be able to have the setback for the chimney, from the chimney, to give an adequate minimum of twenty feet, which is really kind of the basic minimum you get from a garage, that puts it, so it would push into the front of setback. And that's why we're asking for three feet in front. And then for a width of sixteen feet, to be able to have better access to get up the stairs and move around through the space. So that is the request for variance for the attached garage. Should point out that the side, the adjacent property, where the garage is going, is an open land owned by the town, I believe. And, and so there's some talk about it being a park at some point. But right now it's not. I think that's been in the talk for quite some time. So it's not going to, to impact a neighboring property by having the garage be closer than the setback.
Okay, that's good. That was gonna be my next question.
I thought it might.
Is there anybody next to you that might be affected by this?
That's correct. So there's no one, there's no one next to this property. It's, 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 you know, unknown. There's no fencing or anything like that gives an idea that this is the property, this is the setback or the property line or anything associated with that.
And no other neighbors have voiced any opinion on this?
No neighbors have come to me or to the owner with that, with any, any objections to it.
Obviously, nobody in the room that wants to talk to this application. Is there anybody online?
No hands are raised online.
No hands are raised online, okay. Any other members, comments, questions, board members? Everybody okay? I move to close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Genzey.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Okay, we need a motion. Somebody can volunteer to do that.
I'll take it.
Thank you.
I move that we grant the variance to Matthew and Betsy Shinou for a, so there are three variants, if you will, yeah, correct. For a two-foot side yard variance, where twenty feet is necessary. And a seven-foot side yard, where fifty feet is necessary. And a three-foot variance, front yard variance, where fifty feet is necessary. Based upon the following. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There's no feasible method to accomplish the benefit that the applicant is seeking. I don't believe the variances are substantial. There won't be an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. This is a self-created hardship, but it's de minimis in light of the amount of the variance. So based upon that, I move that we grant the variance.
Six months to start.
Six months to, well, we didn't have that yet.
Yes, you are.
Six months to start, one year to finish.
And a final survey.
And a final survey.
Sounds good. You said it all. I didn't hear the other guy.
I didn't prompt anybody, but I'll second the motion.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Genzey.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
You have your variance, good luck.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve in the minutes of the October 23 meeting.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giardina.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Hi.
Ron Genzey.
Hi.
Warren Galle.
Hi.
I move we adjourn the meeting.